All right, at this time I'll call our regularly scheduled meeting of our Harlingen City Commission, which has been duly postponed to order. And please join me in prayer. Almighty God, who has given us this good land for our heritage, we humbly deceased thee that we may always prove ourselves a people mindful of thy favor and glad to do thy will. Bless our land with honorable industry, sound learning, and pure manners. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil way. Defend our liberties and fashion into one united people the multitudes brought hither out of many kindreds and tongues. Endue with the spirit of wisdom those to whom in thy name we entrust the authority of government that there may be justice and peace at home, and that through obedience to thy law we may show forth thy praise among the nations of the earth. In the time of prosperity fill our hearts with thankfulness, and in the day of trouble suffer not our trust in thee to fail all which we ask through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Please join me in the political allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Welcome all of you to our meeting tonight. Glad to have you here. This time we're going to add a point on our agenda, which is the approval of the regular meeting minutes of October 18th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now is your motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item, uh, item two, consent agendas or motion without the consent agenda.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item three, consideration and possible action to grant variance with regards to 120 feet of right-of-way required for a major arterial street on the proposed replant of lots one through three of Costa del Sol subdivision, lots one and two of Target subdivision located on Dixieland Road. Rodrigo.
Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, thank you. The applicant is requesting a variance of a 20-foot additional right-of-way, excuse me, required at Dixieland Road on the proposed subdivision due to the fact that the area is already developed, and the additional right-of-way would essentially encroach in the area. The proposed re-subdivision consists of three lots and parts of two lots from a different subdivision being replanted into three larger lots. Uh, the thorough plan... I did press a little.
You broke it?
No, not yet, sir. I got it. And so this is Dixieland. Here I know that the map is a little hard. And so this is the proposed area. This is where the Target is, the Target Shopping Center. And by combining the lots to adapt here, if Commission remembers, we had had this item or part of this item on the agenda before when they were, when this Commission granted access to the alley to reroute them. So this is the other part on Dixieland Road. And we have, let's see, here. There's an aerial view of the mall, Target, the mall, and the other areas here. And so the Dixieland Road between Lincoln Avenue and Frontage has a 60-foot right-of-way with a 80-foot, I'm sorry, a 60-foot back-to-back with an 80-foot right-of-way. The area is fully developed with four commercial structures, and they're built near the property line. And that's why they're requesting the variance. Staff recommends approval of the variance based on the request complies with the findings outlined in section 109.27 of the Code of Ordinances. There is a hardship in this case that the area along Dixieland Road is already developed, which would prohibit acquiring the additional right-of-way needed to expand the existing right-of-way on Dixieland Road to 120 feet. And there is case history where two other similar variances requests have been approved by the City Commission. The Engineering Department is also recommending approval of this variance, and the planning and zoning and staff recommends approval. I can answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions, Rodrigo? Is there a motion to approve the variance?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion. And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item four, public hearing, consider ordinance for the renewal of a specific use permit to allow a dance reception hall where alcohol is permitted in the general retail GR district located at 302 North First Street, bearing legal description of lots 11 through 12, block 26, Harlingen Original Town Site subdivision, Hapkins, Mirna, Trevino. Rodrigo.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant wishes to continue to operate the dance and reception hall. This establishment also was in front of the Commission last week when the Commission approved the 13 additional lots, so it was contingent on that being approved so that they should come back and do the SUP. The SUP that she already had was only for a year, and it, you know, this is time to renew it, and that's why this applicant is bringing it back. The same 1,200-square-foot building will not sell or provide alcohol on the premises. The establishment does not have set hours of operation, but will not operate later than 2:00 a.m. The parking requirements, as I mentioned, were the, uh, a building this size requires 19. She had six on site, and the City Commission approved to go into a lease agreement for the additional 13. Planning, zoning, and staff recommend approval.
All right, item A, which is public hearing, consider one, likes to speak for or against the renewal of this specific use permit. Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing with item B, which is consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for the renewal of the specific use permit to allow a dance reception hall of the above-described property. I ask the City Attorney to read the caption, please.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen to renew a specific use permit for Mirna Trevino to allow for the continued operation of a dance/reception hall where alcohol is permitted in a general retail district located at 302 North First Street, bearing a legal description of lots 11-12, block 26, Harlingen Original Town Site subdivision, subject to: one, complying with any applicable state requirements; two, maintaining the required off-street parking spaces; and three, complying with the requirements administered by the planning, building inspections, environmental health, fire prevention, police departments providing for publication, and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
So moved. Second. I have one quick question before we vote. We give them three-year, one-year renewals on the parking. So we're going to see this every year?
No, this was a one-year conditional, now it's an SUP as long as she remains in good standards.
Okay. We will have to continue to vote on the parking space.
Correct.
But this is done, Neil.
Correct.
Thank you.
And then, they've been in operation for about a year, that's correct?
Yes.
And everything's fine?
It was clear, it was cleared by all departments, including police and fire. No objections.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item five is a public hearing, consider ordinance to rezone from office O District to general retail GR district for lot 11, block 4, Coronado Acres subdivision located at 725 Morgan Boulevard. Applicant is Ryan Fussie.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property from office district to general retail to allow for more flexible selling of the property in the distant future. Uh, there is an existing building right now that is 3,172 square feet. The subject property has been used as a retail, uh, I'm sorry, real estate office. The surrounding properties are a zone residential, um, single-family office district to the north, and general retail to the south and to the east. The future land use, um, component of the comprehensive plan, um, shows this area to be retail for commercial and office. The request is consistent with the future land use map. And so right now, it's already in operation. They're just trying to plan for the future, and PNC and staff recommends approval. Yes, sir?
Question. So, I'm guessing then the houses immediately adjacent to this property have been notified?
Yes, sir. It was a 200-foot radius, no complaints?
No complaints or objections?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, item A, which is the public hearing, all over the public hearing. Is there anyone likes to speak for or against this rezoning? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing and go to item B, which is the consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for rezoning of the above-described property. I ask the City Attorney to read the caption, please.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen rezoning from office district to general retail district for lot 11, block 4, Coronado Acres subdivision located at 725 North Morgan Boulevard, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item six, public hearing, consider ordinance to rezone from not designated district to general retail GR district to planned development PD district to allow for single-family homes and patio homes for a 15.18 acre tract of land out of block 95, Long Sea Hill subdivision located on the west side of Ed Carey Drive, south of Morris Road, Hapkins, Robbins Management LLC. Rodrigo.
Mayor, thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property from residential, single-family district and general retail to planned development to allow for single-family residence and a patio home development. The subject property is currently vacant right now, and they are going through the subdivision process. The approval of the subdivision is contingent on this rezoning getting approved as well. Based on the planning development site, the proposed development consists of 73 lots front, excuse me, fronting interior streets. All the streets in the subdivision will be public. The perimeter lots in the subdivision will consist of single-family residents averaging 8,050 square feet. The interior lots would consist of patio homes, this would be the ones in here, um, consisting of, averaging 4,600 square feet. The setbacks for the single family will be 20 feet in the front, five feet on the sides, 10 feet on the rear. The setbacks for the proposed patio homes will be 20 feet in the front, zero foot, I guess to the west, is what they're proposing now, and 10 foot on the east side of the property. I don't know if we can, if you can see it here. This would be like, that little square right there is kind of what they're proposing to place the patio homes, and that's why they're having them all to, to one side. The future land use component of the City Harlingen comprehensive plan shows this area to be low-density residential. The request is consistent with the future lose, I'm sorry, future land use plan, and the planning is on board, and staff recommends approval. Yes, sir?
I see Ed Carey, where's Morris on this map?
That would be right here, sir. This is Morris.
Okay. So that's still on the Harlingen city limits?
Yes, sir.
Just bare.
Yes, sir.
We'll have an exit on Ed Carey, and then we're going to have another exit to Morris Road.
That is correct.
So we'll have two entrances or exits.
That is correct, sir.
And it will not open towards the, uh, country club on the other side.
No, that, this is, this is it right here. It just loops around and comes out to Ed Carey, and it goes back around and comes out.
We've had some issues with the patio homes before with regard to the eaves on the roof and how close they can be to the next one. I know that when I look at the map here, it looks like they're separated, but I would just caution you guys to look at that when they submit the plans.
Correct.
Don't let anybody build one that you're not going to be happy with because the roof is too close.
That's correct.
Does this include the money for the, for the subdivision, or is it going to be property glip?
Yes, it will still go through all the subdivision process. It's, they need to rezonate before they can, before they can go forward with all the requirements that we're going to have for subdivision. So even after the rezoning, if it does not meet all the subdivision requirements, then it will pass. But they have to get the rezoning before they can do the, the rest of it.
Um, let me go to item A, which is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone likes to speak for or against this rezoning? Anyone, hearing now, I'll close the public hearing and go back to item B, which is consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a rezone of the above-described property. I ask the City Attorney to read the caption, please.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen rezoning from not-designated district and general retail district to planned development district to allow for single-family homes and patio homes for a 15.18 acre tract of land out of block 95, Long Sea Hill subdivision located on the west side of Ed Carey Drive, south of Morris Road, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Mayor, staff is asking that we pass on item seven.
Okay, well, then without objection from the City Commission, we'll pass item seven. And go to item eight, which is the consideration and possible action to approve the facility use agreement between the City of Harlingen and Harlingen Aquatic Team for the use of Pendleton Pool and Victor Pool and authorize City Management to sign the contract. Pierre.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission. This agreement is with the Harlingen Aquatics Team, and as we did last year, it's the, it's similar. It's for one year. The monthly payments is $200 a month. The payment is due before the 10th of each month. And one thing that has changed is the Park Advisory Board has changed the penalty from $25 a day to $25 per month, anytime that he's delinquent in any, in any month. Now, this, these penalties will not be credited towards his annual fixed base rent. The times that the hat will have in the pool at Pendleton would be 6:00 a.m. to 7:30 a.m. Monday through Friday for a senior team, 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Tuesdays and Thursdays for a senior team, 5:00 to 6:20 Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays for a senior team. And with an additional 40, 40 minutes for strength, strength training on the deck. And then the exception would be is that the city would have access to lanes one, two, and three for the general public, which will be open to the general public at Pendleton. Then, hat will have access to Victor Pool during the summer from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. with the exception of one hour from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Monday through Friday, where the city would be, uh, operating their summer program, their swim, learn to swim program. And so we'll be using lanes one, two, and three, and four. And so Hat will also have access to Pendleton Pool and Victor Pool during two Saturdays out of the month. So if he has any type of tournaments or anything competitive swimming, he would have access to the pools on those two days.
I'm sorry, Javier, can you go over again, the, the summer one?
The summer, um, he'll be using Victor Pool from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. And with the exception of one hour from 9:00 to 10:00.
Okay.
On Monday?
Monday through Friday. Monday through Friday. Because we have our swim, learn to swim program.
Why don't we just have it from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m.? Oh, because it's the everyday?
Yes. And if I, if I may, um, visiting with, with Coach Tucker, he brought something to my attention. On, uh, section four, L, the way we worded it, um, it's, it, uh, it kind of, it shows that, uh, that he'll only have access to lanes five, six, seven, and eight at Victor Pool. And he'll have access actually to all the lanes up to nine o'clock. And so what I did was, I corrected it to where it would read, the club, league, team will have Victor, uh, have access to Victor Pool during the summer period, generally June 1st to, um, August 22nd, uh, five days, Monday through Friday per week, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. with the exception of one hour from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Monday through Friday, when the city will be, the city and the club would share the shallow portion of the pool, lanes one, two, three, and four.
Okay, so this, uh, this proposed agreement is what the staff has recommended and...
And the Park Advisory Board as well.
The Park Advisory Board has also recommended.
Yes, sir.
And approved. But it's a, it's a, it is a change from the, it's a reduction, uh, in usage of lanes from what?
From eight lanes to five lanes.
Yeah.
Is that, is that with all the program, or just, that's not in the summer, or?
No, because what happens is when, during the summer, he moves over to Victor.
Okay.
And so then Pendleton is open.
And, and that reduction, it's only to make him available if, if possible?
Right.
Because, because if nobody shows up to use him, he's able to use him, correct?
Correct, correct. And we, we explained that to them.
Right.
Yeah, I wanted to make that point. I happen to be at the board meeting, and the point was is that they'll only use a lane if somebody shows up. So they, they may not need all three lanes.
Right.
If they only need one lane.
For the athletes or the cross trainers?
They just want to make it available for the general public to, to do their laps.
So if, if a cross trainer comes in, or somebody that wants to rehab, and they only take up one lane, that's only, that's all that's necessary, if it's available?
Correct.
So the lifeguard would notify him, we've got a swimmer, and we need a lane? How does that work?
Yes, sir. The lifeguard would, actually manager would be the one to bring it to his attention.
Okay, Mr. Tucker has given us all a handout, uh, and if he wants to address the Commission, I'll let, I'll let Mr. Tucker address the Commission. Yes, please come to the podium, and if you would, state your name and your, and your address, and then, uh...
Name's John Tucker. I'm Harlingen's Aquatics Team Coach. I live at 1701 Rehonda Road, Harlingen, Texas.
Just state your address, just...
1701 Rehonda Road.
Speak into the microphone then, thanks.
Okay. Our, our issue, the contract's good. It's like it was last year, with the exception of the three lanes, giving up three lanes. And I, and Javier's worked with us to try to build our club. But, but my issue is, I, I know that the, the water aerobics and the lab swimmers and the triathlete groups are growing in this town, as we all hope they will. And at such a point that we lose three lanes, maybe it's the first day, maybe it's not. But the way it's written, we're giving up three lanes, and, uh, that will effectively take out 37.5% of our program across the board, okay? And when I ran the numbers, we, we're already at a limit. If I push kids from three lanes into five lanes, I've got between five and 8.2 kids in a lane. And I have senior swimmers that are well-versed in what they're doing. I have junior team that's not so well-versed, and a lesson program in lane one and the shallow end that will immediately be killed by what's fixing to happen, and the, the junior team and the lesson program are what support our club financially. That's the financial base. That's the building blocks of the club. So when we lose that, it's a matter of months before bankrupt. That happened six years ago when we moved over and lost our, our learn to swim group in the shallow end when the school district moved over and, and water aerobics didn't. So I have experience in what happens when we lose facility usage. We're using the, the handout I gave you guys, there's a page in there, it kind of lays out the facility, the way we utilize it on a daily basis. And the numbers that I put down there were numbers that were last Tuesday night, not this week, but last week. So that's kind of an average of where we are right now. And there's 29 kids there minimum last Tuesday night. So if I take 29 out of eight, put them into five, and, uh, and I've got learn to swim, I got kids that aren't able to swim yet, you know, that are in all that group, so we're bunching up kids, we're creating safety and security issues. But the main thing is, is all you guys probably know, it's, it's a dollars and cents thing. Uh, I mean, I love the kids, but it comes down to dollars and cents. And if you don't have a number of heads in the water to support the overhead, whatever it is, insurance, monthly rent, uh, new equipment, you know, those kind of things, swimming meets and stuff, then eventually you're going to, you're going to go under. And I don't know too many small businesses that can take a 37.5% hickey and keep, and keep moving. So that's kind of where we are. The agreement is, is fine with the exception of those three lanes. And Javier and I had a good conversation the other day, uh, in trying to say, well, where will it work? Well, there's no good place, really. If you guys picture me coming into your office and taking 35 or 37% of your office, saying, don't mind me, you know, I'm not going to interrupt, but I'm going to be here, or taking your child's classroom and taking three rows of classroom out of the middle or the side or back over there, and it's a totally unrelated group, it really undermines the effectiveness, the efficiency, and the whole nine yards of the club. We're a draw for the community. We have people, or swimmers that come to me from all over the valley. I've coached kids from Brownsville to Roma, and, uh, all over the state of Texas when they come visit friends at, in the summertime. Kids from Canada, and South Korea, China. I mean, I've got kids that have trained with us in 21 years from all over, so we've created alliances. We've been emissaries of the community. I mean, we are a community service group, so we'd like to see it stick around. It's been around, really, for over 60 years. It's 50 in Harlingen pools, but more than that overall. So we're a longtime contributor to the community, and we'd like to continue that. So if you guys have any specific questions for me, I'm open.
Does it matter which lanes you give up? Does that make a difference?
Not really. I mean, it doesn't work.
I mean, but if you had to give up one, is it...
If I, the worst three lanes would be lanes one, two, and three, because I have learn to swim in the shallow end, and...
Right, right, right. That's what I get now.
So that, that destroys our base right there. In the middle, that separates the groups, and we're not financially strong enough to have enough coaches to do this group, that group, and that group. Okay, so that splits us up. Kids over there can't hear me talking because the lap swimmers are making noise, and I mean, they're going to make noise. It's part of swimming, you know? Uh, it's not like they do it intentionally, I notice, but it's part of it. So if I put them in, if they're in lane six, seven, and eight, uh, then I'm working across them, and then there's still a noise barrier, and it, it's just, it doesn't fit. I understand the programs, lap swimming, and the triathletes always got their great programs, and I want to see them grow too, but...
So, so when you see the fact that the city, we dues the fee, because I didn't like the fee they gave you last year, $25 a day, I thought that was...
No.
That was considered, and that's not a very good, not a very good tagline.
What if you don't have the money to pay your monthly rent?
Right, so when you do that, and you get the times, and I think the hard part for the parks board, because the park board has dealt with this, and the reason it keeps coming up is because the hard part is to try to do what's best for, like, everybody.
I'm sure.
Not just, you know, one, one particular group. You have a great program, you have great kids, you got very talented kids, and I've seen them, I've seen them myself. So, um, the hard part is, is trying to come up with something that's, again, good for everybody, and, and, and almost like a, a good faith moving forward, that we can't provide everything for the triathletes, even though, yes, it's, it's, all the runners are coming, and, and they're not using it consistently. So, I, I think a good compromise is, is saying, you know, whether it's one lane, two lanes, that we try to do something so that we're not pushing them, not, not trying not to grow your program, or, or prohibit it from coming, but, but saying, and, and, like the comment that was everything, they don't train every day either. You know, it's just, if it's available, if, if you're not, uh, because I'm sure there's days that you don't have 100%, 100% participation, right?
Right.
So it's, it's about being considered with the other people, saying, you know what? Yeah, today they came in, and there was a lane available. You know, obviously, you know, if, if you're full of the capacity, you're doing your thing, that's one thing, but if they walk in, and put yourself as an athlete trying to train for something, and, and swimming, you know very well, it's time in the water, right? They got to put their time in the water. If there's a lane available, and they can use it without disturbing you, not bringing in any music, any other kind of stuff, and they're just going to swim to, to train, um, and we make that available to them, I think that's kind of being fair with everybody. Not that it would happen 100%, right?
There's... There's a, the caveat to that, I mean, there's a flip side to everything. We have six to seven-thirty Monday, Monday through Friday mornings. That's a shared time. I'm not even using that right now, because I don't have anybody participating in it. And so, but when I do, we, we do one or two lanes, whatever it is, and, and we've always shared alike, you know? It's not an issue. And we do our junior team at four to five. That's gonna crank back up again on Monday, Monday through Thursday. And then we've got the five to six-twenty pool time on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday evenings. That's where they're, that's our, our time. And then five to seven on Tuesday, Thursday nights, our time. Seven to ten in the mornings on two Saturdays, and that's, if I read this correctly, that's shared also. But it's, the pool is open from six in the morning to nine at night. There's a lot of other times available that have been available for years. And I find it interesting that they're honing in on a time that we've had for twenty years, twenty-one years. And I know there's at least two or three lap swimming times per day in the pool. So again, I'm, I'm trying to figure out what's the, where's the rub here? Because we're an established program, and there's three opportunities, two or three opportunities for them to come different times of day without being in the water when we are. And I understand what you're saying, okay, exactly, you know?
And it's definitely, it's definitely fair, you know?
Yeah, I understand. But, you know, this is, we're public also. We're also taxpayers, and we need to be treated fairly also. And so, anyway.
We have about, we have about, we have ten people who have signed up.
Actually, can I ask you about that? Because, I know, I read the thing. It said four minutes.
You can respond, but let me just say-
Okay.
I'm gonna say, let me, don't interrupt the chair.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Apologize.
We have ten people who've signed up for Citizen Communication, and it would be kind of moot point if we went to Citizen Communication after we act on this. So if, if they want to speak or if they don't want, I mean, if they're all gonna say the same thing, I would hope that they would maybe appoint a representative and say, come up here and say it, and you all can all stand up. If you all want to speak, I'll give you thirty, you know, about thirty seconds to a minute apiece. But I'm gonna let you, I'm gonna let you speak at this time unless some, unless one of you wants to just speak for the group, and then I can name your, I can, I'll, I'll say your names, and you can stand up, and we'll note that you were here to speak and say a similar thing, if you have the same thing to say.
I tried to do my speaking with the, the handout I gave all you guys, so you can-
That's fine.
Review that.
That's fine.
But I know everybody-
They've signed up, and if they wanna speak, they're, I'm gonna give them the-
Most of them have expressed an interest in the-
If, if they feel like you have spoken for them and, and the, and the handout speaks for them, we're, we're happy, we're happy with that too, okay? Anybody who's signed up for Citizen Communication, want to speak, okay? Well, Marty Alexander. State your name and your resident and your place where-
Marty Alexander, eighteen oh eight Palm Valley Drive East.
I, I didn't get your name. Can you-
Marty Alexander.
Okay.
I, I swim laps. I'm a master swimmer, and I do know quite a few of the triathletes. And we have three times to swim, and they get their training in. I know what's involved in, in master swimming. I know what's involved in triathlete training. And the times they have right now is enough. You have an early morning and an evening that fits into the working person's schedule, and then you have the late morning, which fits into mine because I'm retired. I don't see a need to take into the swim team's time, because we have enough time to train right now. And some days I go and there's nobody, even at those times.
All right. Thank you very much. Christie Tovar, you wanna speak?
Hi, I'm Christie Tovar. My address is three zero zero five Hakaranda Drive.
Thank you.
Okay. Currently, three of my kids participate in the HAT, Learn to Swim and Junior Swim Team. These are the programs that would be eliminated under the current contract due to lack of space. And what I've seen the past few years in terms of facility development, trails, and parks, has been wonderful, and it just seems to drive children away from a program that's encouraging the activity that it seems like the city is promoting, is at cross purposes. Coach Tucker is phenomenal. He is exceptional in that, unlike other programs that we've participated in. He doesn't expect the children to immediately be mini-athletes. He's working to develop each one to potential exactly where they are. So that is something that needs your support and an expansion of opportunity rather than an elimination of such. Thank you.
Thank you. Iris Moya, do you wanna speak, or you, you can say, you can say ditto also?
No, not, not exactly. Iris Moya, eighteen oh one Havreford Boulevard. I wanted to show face, I wanted to show just, these are the kind of athletes that we create. We have two young swimmers here that have made it to the national, I mean, to the Junior Olympics. And, you know, these kids, we don't want them to lose out on anything. Swimming five to six per lane is really, really difficult. Right now, they currently already swim three to four per lane, and even then, my son got bumped in the head because they're swimming fast. They're, that's their whole point, fast. Swim fast, swim hat. And that's what we want them to continue to do. We want, we don't want them to lose out on time in the pool and five to six kids in a lane where they could get hurt. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Will McKinney.
Hello. My name is Will Bradford McKinney, and I'm a senior at UTRGB in Brownsville. And instead of doing homework or training for my next swim meet, I'm here talking to you because this is a reoccurring issue that is very important to many swimmers, not, not just the young ones, but swimmers like me who are, you know, about to graduate, who are regional finalists and of that sort. HAT is a great program. That is the building block of swimmers that come across, all across the valley. And when kids are crammed into, into lanes, I've seen it happen, it's, it's a safety issue. Kids can get concussions. And it's, it's, as well as a safety hazard, it's a, it's a positive influence on the community. Coach Tucker is a phenomenal coach, and if he could take this program to anywhere across the United States, it would, it could, it would hold itself, it would, it would be comparable to, to all the, many other high-level swimming programs.
Okay.
Thank you for your time. Just hope that you make the right decision on this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Tim Coleman.
Tim Coleman, four twenty-two Colorado Drive. I have two children in this program. My concern is the safety of things like the bathrooms with the general public sharing bathrooms with these children. We have parents that are able to be there, but if I'm not able to go in with my daughter, or if I'm not there and someone's not in there with my son, and there's somebody from the general public, it opens the possibility of something wrong going on. So it's a safety concern for me.
Melanie Coupillon. Melanie or Maggie Coupillon.
Hi, good evening. My name's Melanie Coupillon, and I've been swimming for HAT for eight years now. And over the time I've been swimming, I've learned discipline, responsibility, and the value of hard work. And competitive swimming and being on HAT has greatly impacted my life and helped me grow as an athlete and individual, and it's a team that I hope will last for years to come. And thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Did I? Is there, is there another Coupillon that wanted to speak? Okay, all right, go. Judah Allen East. One Allen East.
One Allen East, nine one two Ho Country Road, Edinburgh, Texas. I'm one of the families who come from Edinburgh. Our child joined the group this summer. I want to thank the city. It's a phenomenal program. Y'all do provide the facilities for the program. And fortunately, other cities don't necessarily do that. We've been through various teams, and this is the best team we've been on. My wife came here every day in the summer to bring my daughter over here. She spends money at Walmart and Chick-fil-A while here, which is good for the community. And we did make it a couple of times during the school year, so appreciate all the investment and hope the program keeps going. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Again, keep, keep coming to Walmart. Norma Cruz.
Good evening. My name is Norma Cruz, two zero zero two five Kilborn Road. One of the things that, aside from safety, that hasn't been mentioned is that the HAT program is the only year-round competitive swim program in Harlingen. And pretty much because of the kiddo's schedules, seven to four, Pendleton is pretty much their only opportunity to practice, you know, to swim competitively. And even, even the times they practice really isn't a whole lot to compete on, you know, the competitive level. So that's one thing to consider as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Lacey Lowry.
I'm Lacey Lowry, twenty-six fourteen Clifford. And I just, this is Addison Lowry. She is on the junior team, and I just wanted to emphasize that this program is for our kids. And it's not just for our kids. It's for the future of the Rio Grande Valley. And they're learning lots of skills through this program that will be great when they're adults. The structure, the discipline, the math skills and counting, not to mention all their athleticism. They earn scholarships, and so it's a great deal.
Go ahead, Lacey.
Oh, okay. If we lose three lanes from this program, it will really hurt. As a former teacher, I wouldn't want three, thirty-seven percent of my classroom taken away. That would really hurt my classroom, and so I think we feel the same way about the swim, the swimming classroom also. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody here from the swimming public that wants additional lanes? Anybody come that wants to reduce the HAT lanes because, and wants additional lanes for the public? Anybody come to speak on that or on behalf of that constituency? Okay.
Could I ask Javier a question?
What, we know the times that we're trying to take away from HAT, and we had the lady from Palm Valley, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, but she's obviously utilizing the pool and knows the times. What are the times if someone wanted to use, an adult wanted to use the pool to train? What other times are available to them other than this time?
The only other programs that we've got is water aerobics, which is nine to ten, Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and six-thirty to seven-thirty. So anytime after seven to nine, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. And then after ten, up to four o'clock, anybody can swim, and then after seven-thirty.
What time does the pool close?
Nine o'clock.
Nine PM. And so there's a lifeguard on duty pretty much from seven to nine-
Yes, sir.
At the pool. And what, what was the motivating factor? I mean, how many people contacted you about wanting to swim at this time?
Well, they didn't contact me. They contacted the supervisor, aquatic supervisor, that they wanted swim time in the pool. And so they asked why would, why couldn't we open up lanes to the general public during those, those peak hours when people get out of school, or parents get out of school, or men and children, and the parents can take them to swim? They get home, do their homework, take a shower, and, you know?
See, I really don't think it's a problem to compromise to say, okay, you know, HAT has, has, has the lanes, but if they're, if they're available and, and, and someone wants to come in and train, and HAT's not using the lanes, then we doesn't make, I don't even think it needs to be three. Say it's two lanes, that those, those can be made available to somebody else that wants to train. It's not a constant, it's not a, it's not a big thing. If, again, if HAT is full and they're using all the lanes, then they would have to wait, just like if it was open to a lap swimmer and, and the lanes are full anyway, they would have to wait. The issue is, I think, is if it's not being utilized, why don't we open it up and give the opportunity to other people that do wanna train? I think if we word it that, that way and we, we monitor that, I think that's a, that's a good compromise.
Sort of an if required?
If, yeah, only as needed, right? Because like I stated, I'm pretty certain Mr. Tucker and maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, there's gonna be months out of the year that, that your program is not up a hundred percent. It's gonna drop a little bit in attendance or whatnot. I mean, it is your, your own thing, but where it's not even an issue. You know, I think we're arguing about issues that may or may not come up. You know, the, the thing is to have a system in place or something in place saying, if it's not used, and in this case, he has the, the, the priority or the first option, and if he's using it, they'd have to wait just like anybody else, all right? I think that's, that's a fair statement.
I'd like to ask a question. I was, I went to this meeting and I listened, but I'm hearing two different conversations here. I wanna make sure I get it clear. What I heard at the Parks Board meeting were adults that wanted to swim. Or that's kind of what I'm hearing, and I'm hearing you say, children coming home and going to the pool to swim. So is it, is it children that wanna swim that aren't part of the HAT, and who's training them? Or is it adult swimmers that need to get extra, I mean, get, get their training time? And what, what is it?
I mean, I just use that as an example, but the, the people that were, that were talking to our aquatic supervisor were adults who are training for, you know, triathlons or duathlons, and so but I just use that example that, you know, they get out of school, then, you know, you go to the pool, you go home, do your homework, and so-
I, I hear you. So, and again, I wanna have it in my mind. Monday, I mean, Tuesday and Thursday, five to seven is what he has in the evening.
Yes.
Correct? And Monday, Wednesday, and Friday is five to six-twenty.
Yes.
It's the only time he has available for his group. And, but you said that it's only available from seven-thirty to nine?
Right. He has six to seven in the mornings.
No, he has five to seven Tuesdays and Thursdays in the evening, because he has from six to seven-thirty in the morning.
No, but the agreement says that he, he has Monday through Friday, six AM to seven AM.
Correct.
So Monday through Friday.
Is that, is that the time we wanna reduce the lengths, or we're trying to-
I'm sorry, six-thirty.
Reduce the lengths in the afternoon?
Afternoon.
Afternoon only. So afternoon says five to seven, Tuesday and Thursday only. And five to six-twenty, MWF?
Yes.
Correct? So we're, we're talking an hour and a half?
What happens at six-twenty on Monday, Wednesday, Friday?
Right. And we're talking two hours Tuesday and, but, but I wanna clarify, why is it they can't get in the pool till seven-thirty if he's done at seven?
Who?
HAT is done at seven on, on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Right.
They can get in the pool at seven oh five. They said seven-thirty. I wanna make sure we're clear.
They mean the general public?
The public have access to the pool at seven oh five?
Right.
Once it clears out?
Tuesdays, Tuesdays and Thursdays.
So they almost have full two hours-
Right.
To swim.
Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, seven-thirty.
Why seven-thirty?
Aerobics go, aerobics, water aerobics goes in at six-thirty to seven-thirty.
Okay.
And they use the entire pool?
Is water aerobics gonna give up three lanes?
No, they use the shallow area plus the first three lanes, I believe, with the shallow end.
They play, they play music, right?
Yes.
But they, but water aerobics use the shallow?
I know. I just wanna make sure I'm getting it in my, so they can't, it can't be used because we have somebody that's basically occupying where nobody else can use the pool because they're taking up the whole shallow end? Is that what we're saying?
Well, you've got probably four lanes left, don't you?
They could.
If they're not using? So they can swim, it's starting at six-thirty.
Right.
If somebody needs to lap, then they can start on, because it's three days a week that they can get in there at six-thirty.
Well, no, it takes them a little time, because when, when water aerobics gets out, they gotta re, re, reposition.
Water aerobics starts at six-thirty, doesn't it?
Yes.
Okay, so water aerobics starts at six-thirty. The general public can use the unoccupied lanes three days out of the week.
Right.
I'm trying to be fair.
Well, yeah, but you're asking, you're asking one program to share and the other not.
Well, that's, right now, we're not. I understand that we're not sharing the water aerobics because he said that they can't use the pool until seven-thirty. That's why I'm trying to get clarified in my head. Can they or can, does the public have access or not access at six-thirty to the pool?
To the lanes, they could.
Do water aerobics, yes.
Let me ask, I have a question. How many lanes are we reducing to HAT?
There's a total of eight lanes and we're taking three, leaving them with five.
How many do they have now? How many do you have now?
Eight.
They have eight and we're reducing it to five. How do we come up with three as opposed to one or two?
That's what I'm saying. You know, you look at two.
Or two.
You look at two.
How do we come up with that number?
We just, I mean, there was no formula or anything, it was just-
One guy goes to a pool supervisor and says, hey, I want to swim. Okay, we're gonna give you three lanes. How do we quantify the need? I mean, they're saying, they've quantified their need. They say, we need these lanes and we've got this program in place for however long we've had, a long time. So they say this is how many lanes they need. How do we quantify that the general public needs three lanes?
Again-
That there's that demand?
That's what I'm telling you, that I think it needs to be worded by, if HAT is using the entire pool for their students, they should have a priority because they're renting it throughout the whole year, correct? If an athlete comes in and wants to swim or an adult wants to come and swim and they don't even, if they need a lane, if it's available, then they should be able to swim. And again, it's an as-need basis. Two, try to please almost everybody.
So I think the point we're trying to make is that it would be up to three.
Because the last thing I want to make sure I'm clear with, I don't want them to have to, you know, my kids went to a swim program, I know exactly what it is and it's very beneficial. It's the most important thing, I think, that they learn to swim. So the last thing I want is him to have to reduce his program or do anything like that. But again, to avoid the assumption or the misconception of saying, well, how many times? It's all about a numbers game, right? If they're using it, they're using it. But we're never gonna know that need or assume if it's one person, five adults, ten adults, we're never gonna know that if we keep turning away. You give them the opportunity to come in and use the facilities because it's a public pool. We want to make it sure it's for everybody. Good?
Okay. Make some rest.
I have a question. All this discussion, do we need another pool in Harlingen?
Yes.
I don't know if we need another pool. I think maybe we, I don't think we need another pool. I think maybe we just cover one or have an indoor pool. Because the thing is that Pendletons run year-round because it's an indoor pool. Victor Pool, if it was enclosed, of course, we can run that one year-round.
So if we built a cover over an existing pool, would that make life better for us?
Sure it would.
So Dan, here's a curveball for you, Dan.
Okay. I'm not even gonna look at it.
Okay. Eight minutes. Yeah. So what's it cost to build a pool and what's it cost to build a canopy? I know you don't have the answers.
I don't know.
Yeah, you're not carnack the magnificence.
Well, what, the thing-
That's not the issue.
It's okay to put, you know, to me, it makes more sense if you've got adults in water aerobics to use the lanes that they're not using with adults during the time period. That's the adult time period, water aerobics and lap swimming at Pendleton during this time period. And the kids are there during their time period. So we're not mixing adults and kids in the locker room, but-
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think so. I mean, I don't understand why aerobics can't let the lanes go.
Okay. Commissioner Don Rosas got a question.
One of the questions I have for Coach Tucker is, I mean, you said you have a very good team here and a good sport, but have you ever, I mean, we do have the Harlingen District Aquatic Pool. Have you ever talked to the school district? I know there's a concern with the gentleman about security in the bathrooms and the school district has more control as far as who goes in and goes out, but have you ever talked to the school district about this, possibly working with them?
Can I stand here?
Yes.
I was on the feasibility committee that got that pool built, maybe with residents and teachers and Austin County District folks. And we rented it at that point to get an indoor pool to be able to do it. After they got close to the building, they asked me to come in and talk and what would I want for our program there? If I could have any, this is the way they said, if you could have anything you want, what would you want? And I said, two hours a day, twice a day, uninterrupted. And they, they started to pull their hair back, I knew it would, but I said, you said that I could have whatever I wanted. And I always think they have a championship program, I've built this down to a state level because we had two hours twice a day and a third hour to help them into right-hand and string training. So kids are not gonna be compared to outside of the valley and they've got a time out between the hours and especially if they're split up with other programs. So that's why I'm trying to provide a championship program. In answer to your question, that was the last I heard from the school district.
All right.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I bring up some, one other thing? Coach Tucker brought up the four to five junior team time and what we did was, we took that out when we presented it to the park advisory board. Because when we met with John, Coach Tucker, he didn't have a coach running the junior team and so he wasn't using that hour, so we removed it. We presented it to the park advisory board and that's the way they approved it. So if y'all want to consider that as well, is to add the four to five back in. I know he mentioned it, that he wants to start next week.
But you don't have it or no?
No, it's not in there.
We could add that, that sounds easy. The main problem is the sharing of the lanes. Again, I'm gonna ask a question. What's wrong with the musics playing and water aerobics has lanes available that they can't swim with them? Why do they have to swim with HAT?
They do swim with water aerobics.
The reason that we have, we have a concern because-
They want more time.
They want more time.
Yeah. When people are swimming though, is they're playing music, if our guards blow their whistle, nobody's gonna hear it. And so that's one of the reasons that, you know, it was a safety concern, is we wanted to split them up. We didn't want HAT in there with water aerobics.
Because they shared it before, right?
They shared it before. And it's a safety issue.
All right. Well, we've got a contract that's been, staff recommendation to approve the contract is proposed. That's one option, you can approve that contract. You can approve the contract the same as we have handed to the past or you can do something in between.
Yeah, I know. You know, my whole thing is, is that nobody showed up at that meeting with these concerns. You had an emergency, the reason I went is you showed it as a special meeting. I said, what's going on? I need to find out what's going on. I went to the meeting.
Were there two parks meetings?
Yes.
So there was a parks meeting where they approved the contract without the three lanes and that's not listed in here in what we have.
Correct.
And then after that parks meeting, you called an emergency parks meeting to change the contract to take away the three lanes.
Correct.
Correct.
Right. And I think that there was an issue with Mr. Tucker attending the second meeting.
Yes.
What I would say is that based on what I've seen here, that for right now, we should allow him to use those lanes. We need to study it a little bit more. No, I, even if we don't have a contract, I think we just need to allow him to use those lanes. We gotta figure out what's going on here because all this for me is new. Nothing was presented like this at the parks meeting. To me, it's, we're overruling people that we appoint.
Yeah.
And they didn't get an opportunity to hear this.
Right.
And that's my concern.
Right.
I mean-
Well, we want to extend the prior contract for six months.
And at the same time, we can study what the cost was.
I have a suggestion. We need to take out the twenty-five dollar a day.
I was just gonna, let me throw a suggestion. Why don't we get the numbers that we need because it's really about numbers? And we'll do the contract the way he wants it per year, take attendance, right? Have the guards or the city staff put numbers together so we can actually see what's actually being utilized. So when it comes up again, we can, like you say, study and say, okay, there's no possible way to have anybody else in here because of the numbers. I think that's fair and that we can-
Why aren't we talking to school here? I think we can discuss this on June first or right prior to the June first when the summer kicks in because summer's not an issue. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is that correct? Summer's not an issue because you have Victor Park and so-
Did any member of the public come to this special-
No, sir.
-meeting and say, I want to swim? I don't get to swim?
All the comments that I heard were from the members of the board. There was no public-
I mean, you know, I don't know. My training is, I gotta have evidence.
Right.
I gotta know, I gotta have something more than what you've given me to change this contract. I don't have anything except somebody, except double hearsay that somebody went and talked to the supervisor and said, I want to swim and I don't get to swim because of HAT.
So is it hard to do, Dan, take attendance? Take number count? No. Okay. So we do a six-month and then revisit it?
I would say let's get past this point.
I propose that we extend the prior contract for six months and modify it to take out the twenty-five dollar a day.
Twenty-five dollars, I'll make it to twenty-five dollars a month. Okay.
Is there a motion for that?
So I'm gonna make that through May thirty-first?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay.
So we make the first?
I made the motion.
You made the motion through May thirty-first. There's a second. Any other discussion? All those that ever say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, motion carries. All right. I don't know, board appointments?
I have none.
None.
Board of members. And we've done the City's communication, so ladies and gentlemen, our meeting is concluded and we are adjourned. Thank you. Sure?